Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. There has been a declaration of public notice?
Yes.
Order of business. See any things to alter? Public appearances? Any? Then I'll ask for a moment by motion for approval of the minutes of the December 12th and December 19th meetings, school board meetings.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second, it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recognition information.
Okay, we have three recognitions this evening. First of all, the congratulations goes out to MG senior McKenna Warnock, Iowa recruit, who tied a career high on Friday night with 44 points and went over 2,000 career points in girls' basketball. It's good. Holiday, not just about celebrating joy for ourselves, but instead it's about sharing that joy with others who might need it. Some eighth grade students in Carly Jarvey's classroom at Glacial Dremelin School created holiday cars and visited with local nursing home residents to deliver them. And this year's Winnicott Food Drive, organized by the third grade classes, collected 1,628 items, about 350 more items than last year. All items were sent to the St. Stevens Food Pantry in Monona to help local families in need. So again, congratulations and thank you to those involved.
Announcement, school board election candidates.
Is anybody running?
What's that?
Is anybody running?
Yes. Well, there's two seats, two school board seats up ahead for the spring April 2nd election for three-year terms. Two candidates, Susan Manning and myself, have filed the necessary paperwork and will appear on the ballot in April. There won't be a primary.
For context.
Yeah, administrative report, superintendent's report. Dan?
So I don't have a full report tonight, I just want to give you a preview of what will be at the next board meeting, though, where I want to start talking about the staffing plan. You know that traditionally, in February, we take both board meetings to kind of the preliminary discussion and then ask the board to actually approve a staffing plan. We wait until the high school course selections are done by students before we finalize that. But one of the things I'd like to talk to you a little bit in advance of that is the process that we've gone through this year, specifically with MG 21 and their expansion. And so next meeting I'll speak a little bit about the discussions we've had with not only Rebecca Fox Blair, the executive director, as well as their governance board. I met with them tonight and now kind of kick off, you know, Jared starts preparing the budget. Of course, staffing is the first thing that we need to fill out the blanks on. So said I'll speak a little bit more about, or in detail about that at the next meeting and again, kind of the process to pre, you know, a little bit of a prelude to our February discussions about the staffing plan.
Policy committee, Susan?
Okay, the policy committee met yesterday and we got through a few more new mail updates, but we also had on our agenda the two policies that are up for further discussion and consideration tonight. The, let's say, 2461, I'm recording of IEP meetings on the 9/1/30, public request. So we talked about those and what you have in your board docs tonight are the revised versions from the committee, but I'll talk about that when we get there. So otherwise, our next meeting, we're still going through the new mail updates, our next meeting is February 5th at 9:00 a.m.
Legislative report, Eric?
I mentioned last week, a little bit about it, but there basically were 18 recommendations that the, which the Public Education Committee presented. And out of the 18, they were discussed and they will either come forward as individual bills or budget motions. That's at least what the committee was saying. They discussed all 18 and I handed out a review of what they were, but there wasn't a discussion as far as there was some legislators that said they were going to create a bill. Of course, there's a big process that has to happen, so they could say they're going to create a bill. I guess just kind of wait and see where it's going to go now. The new governor's new registration is starting yesterday? Was it yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah, yesterday.
Technically Monday, right?
Technically Monday, yeah. So hopefully, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
And I did notice this week, the report that you, you know, that was distributed from the commission, they put out a final report, which essentially was the same thing. I think the one, the initial one had several options that they had asked the Legislative Fiscal Bureau to, you know, report on and then, and there were the recommendation, I think they just cleaned it up a little bit for the.
Right, and I believe like for the recommendations, on some of them, not all of them, they determined which one they were going to choose, the recommendation. So is that updated, one posted on?
Yeah, I saw it posted online, I can maybe fill it on board doc. It was essentially the same recommendation.
Yes. We also got today the WSB notice about the Day of the Capitol in March, March 9th. And that's something that if people count attendance, it's helpful to attend because they gear toward in the morning session, there's an update and they have a panel and then they set up, they will set up appointments if they know some of us are coming without our legislators. So it's, it's a good thing to attend if that works for you. And also, I attended a WPN meeting Saturday in Subquarian, and they're trying to do some organizing around the Joint Finance Committee budget hearings that'll be coming up probably in March, we don't have those dates, it sort of depends on how things go, but you know, if you think of people who might be interested in attending those or speaking up, you know, that'd be nice also to get some people, they're trying to build up, kind of do some training and have people tell stories of how the budget really impacts their schools or even other districts. We're actually looking for people, not just in Dane County as well, so.
Susan?
Several of us, two of us, a couple of us, had an opportunity to attend the inaugural yesterday and it was, it was really inspirational and well done. And we were able to stand in line and shake hands with the new governor. So that was very nice. And again, there was articulated repeatedly strong support for public education. So hopefully we'll start seeing that.
Where'd you sit? I was there.
Where'd we sit?
Remember the standing?
You dreamer. Did you get to sit?
Standing right.
No, I was standing.
Weird.
Third floor.
Daniel, well, we were on that first floor, so we were looking straight up.
That was a pretty good vantage.
They were great, and then there was a TV camera directly in front of us that was super, did you get in line and go up to the?
No.
Yeah, it wasn't bad, but.
About 45 minutes.
It felt pretty bad.
I figured he'd probably be publicly.
Yeah, we're going to see him. Yeah, yeah. But it's just fun to have him call you by name and ask you how things are.
Funding would be?
We'll tell you, I think it's out in a few months, right?
Cut off for a month, for sure.
Okay. Under possible action items?
Peter, could we, and it's up to, it's up to you and how your schedule is, your agenda is, but there was a Monongrove Education Foundation meeting yesterday, so, and Dean was out of town, so he asked me to attend in his place. And they had several things I think would be worth reporting out. So can we put that on for the next meeting and?
Sure.
Okay, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Possible action items, policy revisions and deletions.
Okay. So this is the same ones we saw last time, I don't know how you want to proceed, there were only two that people really had questions on, so do you want to talk about those first?
Yeah, why don't we talk about this first?
Okay, so the first one would be 2461, the recording of IEP hearings. And what we did, because we met in committee and discussed your amendment, Eric, and we felt we should just include it in tonight's version, so it doesn't stand out, but if you're scrolling down below the A and B paragraphs in red, it's in the next green sentence where it says, "So you're reporting the IEP meeting is critical, must be requested to consent to access the IEP process to ensure the parent is able to understand the IEP or implement it." And, oh, I'm sorry, it's after that, where's?
Actually.
It's the next, it's above it, it's where that, sorry. That's where I, pulling this up ahead of time. So it is the sentence where it says that if the request has been made, that both the parents and the IEP team will be notified of the, of the decision. So took care with that of your concern. Anybody else have anything on that?
We just added one.
Yeah, we just added this one. Yeah, that's right, it's the very first grade, actually.
So we probably got that change.
Right. Okay, and then for the next, the next one, 9130, we also discussed that and Peter, we had, we had your amendment for the previous time and then your amendment came in by email while we were meeting, so we talked about it at the meeting. And we decided as a committee to recommend adding, if you scroll down to that, to the criteria that could be considered for, to the criteria that could be considered for an instructional materials complaint. But what, if you scroll down to A, that, no, that's not A, I'm sorry, I'm doing such a bad job here.
Just right down to the end.
Trying to find it, yeah, it's way at the end of it. Anyway, we add, we agreed that we should add five and six, the availability of suitable alternatives, and six, the interest of the district in providing an equitable learning environment and school community for all, school community for all students and families. We chose to keep the original language for the next two for reasons we talked about last time. We really felt like in the first one where it says, "No material subject to a complaint may be removed or withdrawn," because of the word solely, solely because it presents an idea that may be unpopular or offensive to some. So clearly, you could still consider that, but it can't be removed solely because of that, there have to be other factors. And then the next sentence, we thought was a better sentence where it says, "No material subject to the complaint may be removed or withdrawn from use pending the determination by the superintendent." We felt that the superintendent really shouldn't withdraw something, if there's a formal complaint filed, there should be a process and that should be followed before he makes a decision. So we left it that way. And we also, and we also left, we left with the original wording where it just ends with the complaint, because again, this does give parents the right to appeal it if they want to. We had some concerns about the language in the amendment about the appeal in that, let's find that here. We felt like in the first part where it says, "The individuals may appeal the superintendent's recommendation," that implies that no one else can and it's possible the superintendent can make a decision and the board might want to appeal. And this, this was true in the last policy too, because when we were going through that procedure, it occurred to me that if the board didn't like the committee request, there was no, nothing in the policy that said we could take it up, because that wasn't, that process was so laid out with a final decision. And this way, if the superintendent made a decision, either the board or some other member of public or the people who brought the complaint could theoretically appeal it if they wanted to or ask the board to review it. And we also didn't like the idea of possibly including another committee, that might be the second committee, because there might be a committee already. We just thought that those last two paragraphs were not necessary, so we are recommending it as we see it here.
I don't, where is there a language that they're saying there may have already been reviewed committee?
It doesn't say that in there, but that's the whole point of not mentioning it, it leaves the process open for the staff, the superintendent could decide to call one, might not call one, it's up to the, whatever process they feel is appropriate. So there may or may not be one. So that was, that was our, and that was our preference to leave that that way.
Okay.
I don't know if this helps, I, I went back.
Hang on a second, procedurally, in the interests of moving along, why don't we take a motion for approval of items 1 through 18, which is policy 0161 and through 4430, dispose of those first?
That would be fine.
Does someone make that motion?
I move approval of policies 1 through 18.
Items.
As presented, items, items, yeah, I'm sorry. Policies listed as items 1 through 18 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, and let's make a motion for, well, actually, we can discuss it before we move it for 9130.
If we make a motion.
Well, we can either way, usually we do that.
Then we can have a discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
We can hold it up for now.
Well, if we want to do that one.
Okay, so I move approval of policy 9130 as presented. Second.
All right, so we move it second, so discussion. Let's go first, Susan?
Okay. I went back and researched this a little bit and, and the last two paragraphs where it says, "The individual may appeal the superintendent's recommendation," that is very clear that that's limiting. And if you say, if you put language in there, that implies that only the individual, and we're not exactly sure who that is, it doesn't say that complaint, is, is, is very limiting, a student can appeal it. And then in the event of appeal, it tells the board very specifically the only things they're allowed to do. If you stop at the language, "Superintendent shall modify the complaint and the determination with respect to the complaint," at that point, that leaves the appeal process and any further action, whether it's to form a committee or to have further discussion or to review the superintendent's position, totally available to the board governance. All you have to do is come in and make a motion to do that. As soon as you put in the last two paragraphs, you've limited the board governance ability in terms of the options that they may want to take in relation to the superintendent's recommendation. So I suspect.
And one more, thought to piggyback on that, because I had written some of my notes and forgot to mention, in that, the last paragraph in the amended version, we also felt was not necessary, because it's all stuff the board could request anyway, in line with what Susan just said. The board could request whatever additional information they want to take the request review, so we just felt not what was necessary to say.
My thought on that is, this will be read, if that language is not in there, this will be read, well, there's no role for the board in this complaint. And also, and rather than, if it's unstated, the individuals who made the complaint in the first place will have no idea, no clue that there's a board role. And so if there is a board role, it's hard coming on us to inform those people who might be, might be interested in that, that they actually have that option, because they'll read the policy and they'll say, oh, well, we're done here. And I think it's important that we communicate that, the complete process. If we're going to say the role has, the board has a role in this, we need to, I think, explicitly make that statement. And the language here may or may not be, you know, optimal, I don't have a problem with that, for example, the individual. I do think limiting it to the individual who made the initial complaint may appeal it to the board, I think that's perfectly fine, I don't see any reason why we would have a third party appeal it to the board, for example. If somebody, a board member wants to bring it up, well, the board member knows that they can bring it to the board, they're not, they don't need to be informed by this policy. But I think that the individuals involved who made the complaint, if this is an option to them, I think that they should be informed of it by the policy. And yes, it's limiting, but that's okay. I think it is, I think it is appropriate to be limiting. If this isn't the right precise language, then that's fine, we can take it down and consider the language a little more carefully. For example, I said the individual may appeal the superintendent's recommendation, I would, I would amend that, I guess, given your point to the complainant may appeal the superintendent's recommendation, for example. And I hope that would be accepted.
So what if, what if there's a problem and you file a complaint? With your kid in the classroom?
Okay.
Not you as a board member.
Okay.
And I have the same complaint?
Yeah.
But I don't file a complaint, because you did it.
Yeah.
Right, and then you go partway and then go by the district and am I, do I have to start the whole process over again, you know, if you get three steps in?
No, I wouldn't.
Or do you, can we, could they join together and do it, because it's an individual?
The, well, individuals making the complaint. I would, I would presume if you started, you know, you'd have to start and finish the process. I mean, if we want to take that language out, that's, that's okay too.
Because I just want to, because it'd be silly.
I mean, you could change this language to, "The decision may, the superintendent's decision may be appealed to the board within five business days," and leave it out, who's doing the, doing the appealing. I just think that it's important, if that's an option for people in this complaint process, that they be informed about it.
Yeah, I think we should treat everyone the exact same way and not leave it any discussion. If they want to appeal to the board, they can appeal to the board. If we find it completely ridiculous, we can hear their appeal and I'll board against it. But once you start limiting who can, who can do this and who can't do that, then you're really opening up a few skin of worms, I think, for people to say, oh, you didn't do it for me because of this or that. The exact same process.
In all language that I submitted, I did, after our discussion last year, I did make, last, two weeks ago, I made a couple of changes. The language about it being removed, "Pending a final determination, material subject to complaint may only be removed or withdrawn from use at the discretion of the superintendent." In other words, superintendent can choose to while he's still in the process to withdraw it, but nobody else can. And I think just, just having that discretion and living, putting it in the hands of the superintendent is the appropriate way to do. I don't, hang on a second, I don't see any particular reason to limit the, limit the ability of the superintendent to do that if he so chooses. But I conceded that's a minor.
Do you want to hear what Dan's thoughts are on this?
Sure.
That's quite helpful.
Look, can I just, on the committee, on that point, that, again, is extremely limiting, because only the superintendent can do it. And it uses the word discretion, which is, by implication, a vague word. So if a teacher pending the final determination of the appeal or the English department decided to do that, they would not be allowed to do that under this policy. The language that's currently written limits a significant players in this scenario from action. And maybe what you want to do is just hold this, again, the only way we can look at it as a policy committee is to have a written amendment. So when we received these written amendments, we read these and it was very clear that the specificity significantly limited the ability, as Jeff said, or maybe Andrew as a board member would like to appeal this decision, you can't do that.
However.
And the appeal process, I, I have the word, just, well, a minute, the appeal process is inherent in the process of a superintendent's decision and board governance. So the board can either do that themselves without the initiation of an appeal. So let's say a board member said, I want us to appeal this decision, they can do that. Right now, it's limited to only the individual who's not defined, which isn't sufficient language for this policy anyway. So if you want to hold it and try and rewrite it, that's fine, but right now, I don't think this is what, there's a motion on the floor.
But we do want to, don't we want to hear Dan's thoughts on this? Without, sorry.
Okay, so specifically about the item of whether or not the superintendent should have authority to remove while it's being considered. Okay, and I think it's important to remember to go back to the earlier part, you know, the process, when there's an initial complaint, okay, the policy for instructional materials we're talking about now, okay, it goes to the teacher and principal to be resolved informally. And so I'm thinking of this scenario, suppose it's something where a teacher made a mistake and used material that probably shouldn't have been, okay, the expectation would be that the teacher will reconsider that, perhaps pull themselves, or the principal will. If it's something that the principal chooses not to remove, then it becomes more formal or then they move on to the director of instruction. And through that process, if they still have not chosen to remove it, to me, then when it comes to the superintendent, it's been through three steps already. And to pull it without going through the process seems, so that'd be my thought, why I shouldn't, the superintendent really shouldn't even have the ability to do that.
You know, that's reasonable, I guess, it's been through the process, you know, I don't see an objection to giving you the ability to do that if you so choose, I don't see that that's why there's more flexibility to me where is always better. And, and one of the things I consider in mind, Susan, you were arguing that the language here is more restrictive, but actually, my amendment is less restrictive than this, than the initial proposal or the proposal of the policy.
That's my, that's your opinion.
No, because my opinion gives the superintendent discretion, yours wording gives nobody discretion to do that, so mine is.
Gives everybody discretion.
"Pending a final determination, material subject to complaint may not be withdrawn," that's more limiting than at the discretion of the superintendent. Right? Or do we need others?
You're, you're talking about, you move just above, pending a final determination, material subject may only be removed at the discretion of superintendent.
Yeah, that's less restrictive than the original language.
Right, which is, but that's already been deleted, that became some of its, not in the policy.
Yeah.
Can I?
Yes, Susan.
A couple of things, one, I think we have to remember that this policy is geared towards core curricular materials, which is another reason why there needs to be a process, it shouldn't just be, the teacher shouldn't just build, because it's kind of, you know, when core materials are selected, a lot of work goes into that, and there's a lot, it's a serious decision. And there also was an incident, I think it was Duluth, where the superintendent did have the ability to pull something, pulled something and the teachers were extremely upset about it, because there wasn't a process. And so I think you can create more problems by doing that. So I think, given that we have a superintendent who believes there should be a process, I also believe there should be a process, that's kind of like.
I think, I think that, yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a big point.
Right.
So that's, I understand where Dan's coming from and I think that that's, that's fine. And again, I'm going to reiterate, my other objection is number, "Material subject to complaint may be removed or withdrawn solely because of residents' ideas that may be unpopular or offensive to some." I don't know why that's in there. I think that if something came before us that was sufficiently unpopular and offensive, that we would want to have the discretion to remove it. I don't think that it's likely that that will happen, given our staff and our professional sort of staff, but I don't see a reason why we would specifically call that out and I'll, and I'll talk for a minute about how I see this. I mean, there's many kinds of speech, offensive speech is one, is a kind of speech, you know, hate speech, commercial speech, what they call fighting words, you know, political speech, there's all these things that, that are protected from the First Amendment, actually. Why do we pick out one, which is offensive? I don't know. Why don't we have all statements about all these things that can be said? Now, it was said in our last meeting that there's a First Amendment right, teachers have First Amendment rights, that is true, but those are very limited in terms of the context of the teaching, they have what they call academic freedom. And I will tell you, I've looked at this carefully, that doesn't apply to the selection and use of core materials. That's not up to a teacher.
I'm not following you, what you're saying, these are core materials, they have gone through a rigorous process with selection.
That is true, that is true, but there's no First Amendment right for, for a teacher to use any particular, for a teacher, teachers to use any particular core materials. If there was, we wouldn't need a policy, this and this all, because there's nothing we can do about it. So for a core material, it's up to us as a board and us as a district. There isn't any, there was, like I said last time, there were all, there's some First Amendment protections for teachers to teach and they're, in this case, there isn't, because this is strictly limited to core materials. The other thing is, and I made this statement last time, and that language, offensive to some, you know, if you look at this, the history of this.
And you sent me that and I never got a reply from you.
Well, no, I didn't, I know.
Asking where the sites were for that.
And I'll, and I'll talk about, I'll talk about that in a little bit.
Give me the sites, please.
I'm sorry, I'll talk about that and I'll give you some of the sites.
That'd be great.
You know, so, you know, what happened, in the 60s, there was a lot of issues with integration and there was a lot of issues on camp. issues with integration, and there was a lot of issues on campus, and with both minorities and women coming into campuses, and they're, um, starting with the University of Wisconsin, and then with Michigan, these universities tried implementing speech codes, um, that restricted people's ability to, um, that would tend to, you know, sort of make campus, what we would say today, a safe place for, um, uh, people, because they were having issues with, you know, aggress, with, with, um, uh, words, with hate speech on, that's the right word, hate speech on campus. In the response to those, um, you see a lot of, a number of court cases were filed. And, um, in general, what the courts did is that they, the courts generally, in terms of students who actually have free speech rights, you know, complete First Amendment rights, courts said, you know, these, these discussions go too far unless they're very carefully tailored about, um, um, you know, fighting words kind of speech. In other words, that have to be, they actually, actually be disruptive to the function of campus. And both the plaintiffs and the courts would use this term, offensive to some, and when you, when they're talking about specific language that came up. And if you look at these, these cases that come up, like, and I'll give you some sites, in the Sambo's versus Ann Arbor, it was this free, free speech code, and it's about the name Sambo's, and that was found to be, you know, the court said, yes, it's offensive to some, but it's okay, because it's first protected by the First Amendment. RIV versus Saint Ball, a cross burning in somebody's yard, protected free speech, even though it's offensive to some. Uh, the Sigma Chi Fraternity versus George Mason University, creates a hostile, they created a hostile learning environment for women and blacks, court said, this is offensive to some, but it's protected First Amendment speech. Shen versus Albany United School District, websites, this is a little later one, extreme racist comment, uh, content, you know, destructive, threatening racist content. Again, the plaintiff said, well, yeah, this is offensive, in the, I'm sorry, the defendants and the court said, you know, this is offensive to some, but it's protected First Amendment speech. And many cases, these things are upheld in court, yes, it's, it's protected First Amendment speech, but when you look, you find these offensive to some words used in the court cases, it's almost always used in the context of extreme racial statements, hates, what we call hate speech. So, when we have in this policy, offensive to some, it reads to me that we have singled out hate speech as something that we protect. And why we have, it's just the way it seems to me.
Yeah.
And why we have singled that out for protection, I cannot fathom.
I totally disagree with that interpretation. That is absolutely not what I would agree with. This has nothing to do with hate speech. I mean, hate speech is going to be a whole different category.
In the.
And we're, we're talking about responsible staff.
In the courtroom.
I know, but those, those issues are very, I'm not going to get into an argument, I'm just going to, I'm just going to make this one point. I think that is way overthinking it. I don't think, we're, we're not talking about hate speech here, we're talking about carefully selected curriculum materials, and I think this is an important sense to leave in, that's why I've said that before, I don't need to add anymore to it. You can continue if you want, but I, I think we should just vote, and then let somebody else have some to decide.
Yeah, I actually was going to bring up the same thing, does not to that extent. I think, I think that you can have offensive speech in there, but there's no reason we should. I think unpopular doesn't bother me so much, I say unpopular things all the time, but offensive is different, and if we're, if it's offensive to some, then things change. I mean, you know, we've had Indian mascots for a hundred years, and now we realize that is really a stupid offensive thing to do, and we, and they use the same things. It's, it's only some, so we're not going to change it. And that's what the, the legislature is, I think, I think that's got to be out of there. If it's offensive to some, if it's really offensive to some, then I think we got to relook at what we're doing. And it's simple, if we're, to say solely you can't take it out for offensive, I, I disagree with that completely. If it's offensive to some, I think you need, you need to be able to pull that, because life changes. Enter.
I'm trying to figure out when do we draw the line of offensive, because, you know, just recently, um, the world is pegging Frosty the Snowman as being naked and smoking a pipe. And then you have another group that says that they want Santa Claus to be trans neutral or trans, just something like that. And, so, you know, but we're in a changed world that everything, even now, Dr. Seuss books, they're trying to find stuff offensive, so we have to, I think we have to just find, which is going to be difficult, because I don't know what, because then every book is going to be offensive to some. I mean, it's, we're, we're in a time now that everything is offensive to everyone. You breathe wrong, it's offensive to someone. I mean, it, it's just, it's just not going. So, we can argue for hours on this policy, it's going to change probably in two weeks, because they're going to find something, someone's going to find something else offensive. I mean, when do we draw the line? We talking, you know, we talking about, um, books, and I, I just.
You know, if, if I can respond to that.
Oh, yeah.
You don't think that there's a line anywhere that could be crossed with offense? Because this doesn't say if it offends somebody, we have to remove it. It says it has to be determined, that there has to be a process to determine, you know, given the six criteria. However, the way that's written, if you go through these six, hang on, if you go through these six types of criteria, and you still find it's, but, and you find it's extremely offensive, but you don't find, you know, some other reason to reject it, according to this policy, you can't reject it. And I'm just saying, if that should be at the discretion, if it's offensive, sufficiently offensive, it should be a discretion of the people reviewing this. I think partly because of what you, what you mentioned, because ideas about what is offense, is or isn't offensive, change over time. And one person's perceptive, perception may be one thing, but we may, over time, as a group, decide, oh, you know, this is really going, this really goes too far. You know, I, I think of Bugs Bunny cub cartoons I watched as a kid with the Indian and the, and other minority characters, and it's like, ooh, that, we, we, you know, that's not fun. There's no way they would belong in a classroom today for.
Well, it's all, it's all about demographics, it's where you're at, you know? Some areas, if you're in a predominantly more minority area, these would, some things would not be as offensive. It's a learning opportunity.
Which is why, it's a, it's a community judgment about what is and what isn't acceptable, if you ask me.
So, to me, this is more of a community discussion. Parents need to come out, talk with the board and teachers, and need to come to common ground and say, I think that, you know, everybody should just come out and have a big thing about what needs to be taught, because it looks like you're going to just cancel out reading in general. That's what it's, it's almost coming down to. I mean, you know, I learned Harvard.
No, like I said.
And, uh, there might be some special stuff in there, too.
I think that there may be a line with offensive that, that can be crossed.
But you can't write about offensive.
And, so, to protect it in this policy and say, no, offensive, there's no line on offensive, there's never, nothing is ever too offensive to take it out on that ground, that seems to me to go too far.
Since we're apparently not raising hands, can I just suggest, if something is that offensive, it's going to be one of those other criteria as well.
Maybe.
It just, we just don't need it in there, and, and the word solely is in there because there should be another mitigating factor. And if something is extremely offensive, I'm pretty sure one of those other six criteria are going to apply. So, it's not, so, so we leave it in there because we are going to get arguments about political ideas and various other things in various curricula, I think, if we don't have some protection in there. And that's why I'd like to leave it in.
And, and exactly right, so if you want to protect political speech, we should say, we have to say, because it's political, we're not going to take it out, solely because it's political. Why is it different? Why is political speech different from offensive speech?
Because it could be religious, it could be, people could think of all kinds of reasons.
Yes, but why do you signal out offensive?
Are you, I, do you want to make an amendment? I mean, there's a motion on the floor, I mean, I, unless, I haven't heard from Eric yet, maybe he has some kind of a speaker, maybe we should just vote. I mean, we can vote it up or down.
Yeah, sure.
It's as easy as that.
Yeah, um, I would like to make a motion that we.
What, amendment?
That, a motion to amend, that we strike the language, no material subject to complaint may be removed or withdrawn solely because of residents' ideas that are maybe unpopular or offensive to some.
I will second that.
Move in second. Any more discussion? All in favor? This is to add, add those, the words to the.
Let's roll call it, then we'll know.
Roll call vote, starting with Jeff.
I'll start, will you, we're voting in.
We're going to strike that sentence.
That's right.
We're voting this on your amendment, and then I will, absolutely, yes.
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 No.
No.
The next amendment I would propose is that we add language that's presented in, where the last two paragraphs about, uh, board review, with the exception that we change the word individuals to the original complainant may appeal the superintendent's recommendation. So, I'm making a motion to amend by adding the language in the last two paragraphs, the individual may appeal the superintendent's recommendation, and only if we change the individual to the complainant. Is there a second?
Here, do you hold on a second? Here, Eric, I'm making a amendment. It's less, it's kind of sloppy, it's the last two, so it's just changing complaint, individuals.
Changing that to the complaint.
It's, it's in your board docs, you.
Yeah, it's in the, yeah, it's way below.
It's in the blue, it's the last two.
This, last two paragraphs, right here.
So, the complaint, that's it.
That's the only one we can, write that language.
Okay.
So, it's adding the last two paragraphs, by substituting for complainants.
This is what you sent in the email?
Yep. Instead of changing individual to complainant.
So, you have to go back, if you're in the policy, go back to board, meeting board docs, and it's way at the bottom, here, so we're just.
And the complainant resolves the language, because it's the same language that's used in the sense above the superintendent shall notify the complainants.
Did you make a motion?
Yep.
Yes, to, is a second to put it in. Are we discussing, can we discuss?
Yep, absolutely.
Is there a second?
Yes, Jeff made a second.
So, you're, you're, you want to, you want to change, to strike individuals?
Yep.
And put in place that original complait, complainants?
The complainants, just plain the complainants, the same language that's used in the sentence above.
Why?
What's that?
Why?
Why what?
Why, what, what, why, why you want it?
The motion, the motion is to add those two paragraphs.
Uh-huh.
Okay?
The entire two paragraphs.
The entire two paragraphs, with the exception, is, instead of as a written, but to change it.
Oh, okay.
To individual to complainant.
All right, now I understand.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, the two paragraphs which lay out the boards, give notice essentially that, that there's a board role. I'm waiting for.
Can you give a little something here?
Yeah.
Give them like three minutes to vote, Michael.
Oh, sure.
Everyone, you have three minutes to read.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Okay. Why don't you take, go ahead, Jeff, we won't have a vote before you go back.
Oh, okay.
No, go ahead, we'll wait for Jeff to return before we vote. If you have any further disco, questions or discussion.
What, what's your motivation here before, for making?
I want to communicate, I want to communicate to somebody, does make, there's two things. First of all, I think the board has a role. In fact, when this policy initially came up, we as a board sent it back to committee and asked that the, the committee recognize that the board has a role in this process. I believe that if we're going to have a role, we need to make it explicit, so that people understand that there's a communication, that, that we can communicate people that, yes, you can bring to the board. And second of all, I believe that there should be a board role, because it's the board that reflects community values, that's our job, um, here, is to reflect community values. And if we have a group of parents or parents or, or parents or groups of parents that come to us with an unresolved issue, ultimately, it falls to us to resolve this, and it's because of our special role is to represent the community to the school district. We don't represent the school, the, the schools, we represent the community here in the school district.
So, it, I'm sorry, just go.
Go ahead, is this your question?
So, are, are you saying, is the goal here to bypass the grouping, the, the group or committee that was created beforehand?
There is no group or committee.
There, there, the way the policy reads here is that the complaint goes first to the teacher and principal, then, then it goes to the superintendent, and he can decide how to, he can either have a committee or not.
Okay, gosh.
He can do whatever he wants.
Right.
So, there's no bypassing, I think, it's just, it's just left up to him how to, what process to use. And then, once he makes a final decision.
It can be appealed.
It can always be appealed to the board, and the board could decide.
Couldn't it be appealed to the board anyways?
Yes, it can.
Yes, but if there's no language, I mean, people can bring any issue they want to the board.
Yeah.
But there's no, if there's no language, okay, to, one thing, first thing that's going to happen is that people will interpret, say, well, there's no board role.
Wasn't this appealed to the board before?
Yes, but there was language.
There was language that said that, yeah.
That's, that, that could be, that could be appealed. Second of all, I think it's important, if the policy informs people who might be complainants as if they can, can bring it to the board. And I think it's important to recognize the board's role because of our unique job to represent the community of the school district. Hang on a second, here.
No, good, Susan. Well, again, the, and I should, I should find that statute for us, because I think that would be a helpful piece to have, but the WSB language is very clear, and there are points about board role and board governance, that our job, our job today is to look at everything our superintendent does. And if there is a problem with that, or we're concerned about that, then as a board, it comes here immediately. We don't have to wait for somebody to appeal it, we don't have to limit that to the complainant involved. So, if the family that was involved in the previous thing did not complain, but someone else, maybe another student in the class, wanted to appeal that decision, under this language, that is not allowable, because it limits this appeal only to the complainant. If what you want to do is write more governance language, then, fine, let's do that. But the only way this language should be approved is if you believe the only one that can appeal the superintendent's decision is the person or persons who filed the complaint, then you support this amendment, otherwise you don't.
Um, that's not correct, and I'll tell you why, I, I will tell you why it's not correct, because as you said, we can do anything we want that we're concerned about. If the other person in the class comes to the board with us and wants us to make an issue, as you said, we, we are able to do that. You said yourself, we are able to do that, because anybody can. This just gives the individual, tells the complainant they're right, the complainant may, it doesn't say no one else may, it says the complainant may. Now, here's the thing, if we don't have this language in it, the complainant may or may not know that they can bring it, bring this to the board, and may, they may see.
Guess they'll ask.
And, but, and your comment about us, um, bringing things forward, we already know that. This language isn't here for you and me, this language here is here for the complainant. But this board as a group said, sent us back to committee to recognize the board's role, is to add language about the board's role. This is the, and, and I think we need to do that.
The way we felt we did that was by taking out the word final, the superintendent, it does, there's nothing about the superintendent's decision being final, we thought it took care of it.
That doesn't provide enough adequate notice, that does not provide adequate.
I understand that's your point. I, I still don't agree with it, but I understand that's your point.
And I don't agree with yours.
I know, I got it.
Okay.
Agree to disagree, it's fine, won't be the first time, we'll let.
What does it hurt to put in there that there is another step for people to know that there's a step, I just understand that.
Eric, are you, you still look concerned?
I mean.
We can move on to them.
Obviously, technically, we have the final say on everything, because we would be like. But not everybody understands how that stuff works, so, then in government, and followed it enough to understand that, some people have no idea of it. So, it's, if it's in there, they could at least understand, and it doesn't hurt us, because we, if you're going to put it implied, you might as well put the name thing in there.
I, I don't know, I, I guess I just didn't, I didn't see real, the problem I saw with the policy regarding this before wasn't related to this. The problem, the, the one problem I felt with, from before, and I don't even know if it's related to policy, is I didn't think that the public had a chance to voice their concerns before the committee, um, made a decision, that's the problem I thought that we had. I know what I, what I saw, I don't know, I didn't have, I didn't, I thought the. I didn't have, I didn't, I thought the process was good, the process, that was outlined and following was, I thought that was a good way to do it. I suppose, so, I just having a hard time.
Okay.
Understanding the, if, if they can, if you can already appeal, you're just making it clear that they can appeal?
Wait, hang on, I want to discuss with, our current policy explicitly says they can appeal.
Yep.
The proposed language right now that's in front of us to replace that takes out any mention of appeal. I am not amending our current policy, I'm making an amendment to the proposed policy that's in front of us. The proposed policy has no mention of an appeal to the board. Does that make sense?
No. I lost it, it's in something.
Okay.
No, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, which, which part don't you get?
So the previous policy has a mention of appeal?
Yes, the previous policy.
And the revised, the suggested motion to revise?
No, stop, hang on, what we, we have a previous policy, that actually, that's currently in place, current policy in place.
So we should refer to it as current policy in place?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, what we have in front of, before us is an amended policy that replaces that.
Right.
The amended policy as written, that we received from the policy committee, has no mention of an appeal. Okay? That's what's in your board docs, there's no mention of the appeal.
Got you.
Okay. What's, the most recent motion is to amend, not the existing policy, but to amend the proposed new language to add verbiage about the appeal.
And Susan Fox, what was your, what was the reason you didn't agree with it?
We, we just felt like it wasn't necessary, and we also felt like if we don't say the complainant may bring the appeal, it seems like by stating that, it implies the board can't question the appeal, and I, I thought, and I, and I noticed that in the, our current policy doesn't give the board a role to question the committee's decision. And I felt like, you know, I'd rather just be silent on it, because then if there were objections, somebody else could appeal it, whether it was the board, or someone else is in the class, or whatever, it could be, it's probably, it might be messier, but it's not any cleaner to put this language in. And then the language at the bottom, I just didn't like that, I mean, you don't have to have a committee again, but it says including a possible committee again. I mean, I, when I'm looking at that last paragraph, I'm thinking, this is a process that could go on for months. That may be good anyway, you know, it does, I just don't think any of it's necessary to put in there, I just, you know, it, because we have, people do have the, I always have the right to appeal to go to board. Anybody who files a formal complaint and takes, takes the time to do that, and go through a process, is going, and gets a decision they don't like, they're going to say, what are my options now? That's just, that's going to happen. So I don't think it's necessary to put it in there, and it just, it might restrict to who else might want to question the decision. So I, I just thought, it's better, it's cleaner to not have it in there, in my opinion.
I agree with Susan Fox, that's how I'm going to feel.
That, if we don't, if we're silent on it, that people will have more information about?
No, that we, that is not necessary.
How will people know that they can appeal it to the board?
That's how I'm going to, how, because they know they can appeal.
No, they don't.
You just said that you.
All they have to do is ask.
No, you didn't ask, hang on a second.
Point of order, point of order.
Susan, Susan, I'm responding to Eric, I am responding to.
You can do that, but you have identified yourself as having a board.
I am just, well, the president of the board, and.
And are you done with the board?
Susan, you don't have the board, it's the floor. Eric.
You can't count on the board either.
Eric, Eric, I want to make, if we approve the language without these, this addition, we will no longer have any mention of an appeal in the entire policy. I think you don't, I'm not sure that you got what we're doing here.
No, I get it.
Right.
Okay, so, they will not know, if you pick up the policy and read it, you will have no idea that you can appeal it to the board.
Unless they ask.
Unless they ask.
Unless they ask. And if they ask, depending on whom they ask, they may see, see the, the language may not be, they might not be told, yo, that's, that's an option.
So somebody that doesn't know what, I said, really, let's just remember, they're going to get shut down in four separate processes, and then they're going to sit down with people that just shut them down and say, what else can I do? What else can I do to overturn your decision?
And I'll say, here's the policy, and the policy doesn't say anything about it.
Right, right, no, it's not, they're not going to ask.
I'd like to call a question.
Okay, is a motion to call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. What do we need, we need?
Two thirds.
Okay. So the call question, so the motion on the table for us is to amend the proposed language by adding these two paragraphs. All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote?
Roll call vote, that's what I.
Jeff?
I'll start, can I go on? Yes.
No.
Yes?
No.
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 Okay. Motion, motion fails, so we're back to the main motion.
Which is on the policy as presented.
No, it's on the policy as presented. And I would make a motion that we table this to our next meeting until we can have, because of the, I think, the vision on the board, so, so that, not till next, that we postpone until our February meeting, when Dean will be present.
When the full board.
The full board will be present.
I'll second that.
So move to second, postpone. Postponements are debatable, so all in favor of postponing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
What is, what, we're just putting off a decision as well, this is.
That's right.
Oh, well, I actually think we should, I, I think we should, because Dean's not here, so I think that's a good idea, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
So February or January 30th?
Whenever, next meeting Dean's back.
Okay, well, your motion said February, so.
Yeah, I think it's, I think he might be at the second meeting, but I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
January.
Whatever.
As I know, he'll be here.
Okay, then that meeting, next January.
Since he can tell him, I'll run to his house.
Alright. Uh, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, we had something to go on about tonight, is co-curricular net, or is it scheduled? Come on, Connor?
Okay. So, recommendation is, I think hopefully what's written in board docs is pretty clear, but just to summarize, the first one is for a new position at the high school, very excited that we are providing an additional opportunity for students by creating a family career community leaders of America club this spring. And so based on the research that high school principal Paul Bros did with staff, he's recommending that it is, advisorship would be very comparable to the others that are listed there. And so, that recommendation is to add that position to the schedule. The other ones are an opportunity to make an adjustment in the compensation in order to make those more equitable. And this is something that, this, we've had this discussion for quite some time, I've had discussion with representatives from the MGA, as well as some individual teachers, and it kind of came up at the end of last year, and before I wanted to move forward with the board, I wanted principal input as well, specifically about thoughts on these coordinator positions. With the new principal at GDS, that's why we're waiting now till mid-year, where Principal Langres had an opportunity to evaluate, and she supports the initial recommendation as well, that as you can see from the written report, she believes that all the coordinators really have very similar expectations, even though the number of people in those departments may vary. We already have some people on the schedule, you'll see with as few as only three people in the department making that same, you know, higher wage, and so, we're recommending that we make the adjustment for those three coordinator positions to be the same amount as all the other ones. So.
Discussion?
I have a question. Dean, why is it that we prioritize some sports over other sports such as football, and make the percentage higher than, let's say, soccer, or, you know, cross country? Is there a reason?
I think a couple of things. I'm not, I think a large factor that go into these positions are the length of season and, you know, length of time spent.
Those are the same length though.
So.
Some are contests.
You know, so those are things that start to have been determined. These, you know, as you know, for many years were always collectively bargained. And so, this schedule largely represents what was in that collective bargaining agreement, we've made some minor adjustments over, you know, over the past few years. And, but, I, that's the best answer I can give you, is that's the way it's been, and I'm sure at the time they were developed, I will say there was a review done, right at the time I started here about six years ago, where it was a committee of teachers and administrators that looked at all of the positions, and then ultimately, based upon, you know, that was considered, and then ultimately, the athletic director and principal made final recommendations to the board on any adjustments at that time. I will say that those positions were not adjusted.
Yeah. I, I guess I just say, I, I don't have a problem with the, the percentage base for the football position, I think we need to keep in mind, those are typically all male coaches, you know, for the most part, not, not to say that we couldn't have a woman coaching football, but that's not typically the case. So that's a male dominated sport, and we have sports like basketball, and soccer, and track, which have both women and men. And I think it would be, you know, nice to prioritize those as the same that we prioritize football, with the same percentages for varsity assistant coaches, freshman coaches. And I know if it's a time factor, being a coach myself, all the coaches play a little amount of time, and the seasons are pretty comparable to each other. So I, I, and just, just my opinion of that, you know, the percentage for those sports.
The other fact, right or wrong, the other factor that I think comes into play is looking at other school districts and comparables.
Right. I, I think that's going to be changing in other districts that you feel, but I mean.
I'll be glad, I, I think, I think it's a really good point they raised, and, and I will take that back to our high school experience in hand.
I would just be curious to see if it's something that maybe, you know, at least look at.
And I'd be curious as well, have other schools make some adjustments in some of those areas.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Clearly, those sports have evolved, if that's the right word, grown, you know, over the years, perhaps when they were initially.
Yeah. And I think traditionally, you know, football is typically been the primary, most popular sport, and it, and it is right now. But, you know, I see an increase in, in other sports, you know, where is football? I don't know what the numbers are, I know in some districts, it's a declining sport now, as far as the numbers and people going on, so.
So you're saying that even though a team of professionals that we really respect looked at it, things have changed over time, and now we need to rethink what, what our original thoughts were?
I think everything changes.
Right.
Over time, so yeah, we, we can't go by something that someone did 10 years ago.
And the committee that looked at it, that came forward with this, that's, that's not a, a better view of them, it's just, it's a different time.
Yeah, you know, it's a decade later.
It's like I heard this argument like 10 minutes ago, but.
Not exactly, it was a couple of years ago, but, oh, I think it's still a reissue.
Right, that's right.
Because it was still based on these formulas, I mean, this, this went on for, this is going for like three years, it's just, it was a big deal.
Yeah.
And so it was pretty recent, but, yeah, it wouldn't hurt to, I don't know, either ways, work that kind of year.
Right. I'd like a motion for approval to rise 2018 and 19 co-curricular, and handed schedules presented.
So move.
So move to the second of the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, open enrollment projection, open enrollment recommendations.
We'll turn right over to Jerry to fill out mine.
Alright, so we were able to attach our working draft. I want to bring attention to it's a draft still, there's a lot of things that we're still working through. But attached is board policy that talks about open enrollment, probably the most important thing is even though we have board policy, it's really driven by state law, and a lot, and having the district determine what, how many numbers we can open, and what body law we can open. So, the document that I attached has, is the exact same type of document that I attached last year. The thing that will change from this meeting to the January 30th, or January 30th meeting when we approve it, is actually we improve open enrollment by grade level, it's not by building grade, but when we look at developing those numbers, we need to look at our current enrollment, and then we cast forward, and we look at current enrollment, we look at enrollment projections, and trying to look at some trends to determine if the projection is within our range, and what does that potentially look like? And then also, in, at the end of the month, we, in addition to the open enrollment numbers that we approve, you, we will also bring forth the number of those positions or openings that are qualified for special education. So on this document, what we will talk about tonight does not include special education, because that's quite a lengthy process, and once we get all the numbers, and so this coming Friday is actually our second Friday counts, so that will become our official numbers that we use, and so in this situation, we're using the third Friday, which is from September, and then we've rolled those numbers forward, looked at projections, and then it does in here have the 18, 19 sections, so that's what we currently have. What we're looking at for sections for next year, and you can see, obviously, when we come forward with the staffing plans, that's what this really will show up at, but where you can see as we move students forward, you can see most of everything stays status quo, except for we do have some movement at Winnequa, a couple of grades going down, and a couple of grades going up, so that right now, we're nuts out at no increase of sections there. Then we move into the average class size, and so there is board policy that gives class size guidelines, and then class size goals. And so when we are looking at open enrollments, by following state statute, we use our class size goal as our number of trying to achieve. So how that works is we take the 19, 20 projected enrollments, divide that by our projected sections to give us our average class size. So for example, if we have at Cottage Grove second grade, currently, there's 153 students. However, next year we're projecting to have 150, because if you look at first grade at Taylor Curry, those kids are going to roll over, and based on some trends that we've seen over the school year, in addition to what our enrollment projections were telling us, we anticipate having approximately 150 students. Currently, there's eight sections there, which gives us a current class size average of 19.13, which is below the class size goal. So if we do receive alternate open enrollment applications during the school year, we accept them to get us to the class size goal of 20. So then, we believe that since we're there, we're currently at 18.75, if we move those kids forward and we put up approximately 150 kids there with eight sections, that brings a class size average of 18.75. So if we were to open up 10 additional seats, that would bring us to our class size goal of 20. So in the very far right, you'll see that's what we're looking at proposed, open enrollment seats, and that brings us to that class size goal. The one area is where you'll see a number again is our freshmen, so the last couple of years at grade nine, we have not accepted any students because we had large grade coming through, and we're at that approximately 270, 275 mark. We do have a, a smaller eighth grade class that's coming over to be freshman next year, and then we do typically have between, you know, 10 to 15 private student, students join us, schools, students join us, and so those are incorporated in there, and then with some growth, brings us to where we believe if we open up approximately 30 seats as of today, we would be able to approach our 275 mark. And then, so you can see this working out, but like I said, at the end of the month, after we get our second Friday counts, we have some opportunity. Tomorrow, we have administrative team, so we'll go over this with our principals as well. But this is just really the first opportunity for you as a board to look at what sort of, what it's sort of trending out to be.
Questions? Got, I've got one, which is just maybe, you know, I look at the, the same cohort cast forward a year. For example, ninth to 10th next year goes from 274 to 273. But 10th to 11th goes from, goes down one, 10th to 11th goes up by three, 10th, 11th to 12th goes up by nine. You know, I don't see this consistent one going up, one going down, what is that based on?
So, so the cash flow, so if you look at freshman, there's 274.
Yep.
For next year, it's 273, so the 274, what, third Friday, and so I do have, I do track what movement looks like during the year. So when we have second Friday count, and I replace the third Friday with the second Friday, we've actually saw some decrease in our enrollment. Friday, we've actually saw some decrease in our enrollment in grade nine, so.
That's, okay, that's fine. And then we saw some increase in grade 11?
Well, grade 11 to 12, that's what makes it tricky, because grade 12 also includes some of our students that are classified in infant camp as grade 13, which are students that, you know, continue with us until, you know, with IP's potentially until age 21.
Okay.
So that's, those kids, some of them might still be in grade 12 right now, and so then the cohort leaves, and they stay with us.
Gotcha. All right, that makes sense.
So, I have a question. So is this, this is just on tonight, because when you were talking about possibly adjusting, we're not, you know.
We're not.
Because that was one of my questions too, because, you know, some of these additions are pretty tight with the goals, but, okay.
So, like I said, the third, or the second Friday is this Friday.
Right.
We have administrative team tomorrow that will discuss this with the principals, and see where they're at, and then also give us a couple more weeks to, you know, adjust the more numbers, and obviously, the final recommendation will be on the 30th, because by law, we have to have our initial approval by the end of January.
Right.
And open enrollment starts in February, and will run until the end of April, and then we make our selections in May, and the fight just begins.
Thank you. Next is the Wasby delegate assembly resolutions. So Andrew, you're a delegate, right?
Yes.
So that the delegate assembly, they will have, you know, they will go through a series of resolutions this year, there are how many? And they will accept input and have members vote, the delegates vote on the various resolutions. There's 22 resolutions? Does anybody have any comment about these that would be good for Andrew here? Susan?
I thought they all looked fine, except for 1916, the school safety one.
1916.
Which I do have a concern with, and I would personally support not supporting it. It basically is saying that to further enhance school safety, they would approve, they would encourage legislation along prosecutors to bring felony charges against any individual who intentionally conveys a threat or false information concerning an attempt to use a dangerous weapon, including a firearm, to injure or kill a person on school property. Currently, it is a felony to call it a bomb threat. This would also make it a felony to say you're going to shoot someone, or something like that potentially, and I just personally think it's a little bit, it's a bridge too far for me. And I did also notice.
Particularly because it doesn't, it's any individual, you know, including students.
Yeah, and I just think if kids are doing that, we need to deal with that behavior, and not make it a felony, and risk a wreck, I just don't like that, and in fact, I tried to research this a little bit, there was an objection raised by someone else for a similar reason.
Yeah.
So I just, that's the one I would not support. In fact, Dan Ross, I quote Dan Ross Miller in this article, saying he supports the motives of legislators, would like to see the language that encourages both prosecutors and judges to use discretion when charging teens who threaten to bring guns to school. He's worried that a law could end up sending a troubled teen to jail when a non-criminal penalty like suspension and court order treatment might be better for both the school and offending student. I guess that sums up how I feel as well. So I was happy to hear, see that Dan had that statement after I researched this and I saw it, so. So I would, you know, usually, Andrew, we give you a sense of, as a board, what we approve, and personally, I, the rest of my life, except this one, I would vote against this one.
How does, how does anybody else feel about 916?
Does this mean if a student says, "I'm going to, or I'm going to kill you, or I'm going to shoot you," that if they don't, if they don't have firearm, that they could be charged as a felony?
Yep, says a threat.
That's kind of, that's what it's saying, yeah. I mean, there's no specific language, but that's.
That's a little bit too much.
Because, because how many times would there be a student that gets angry, and might say, "I'm going to kill, you know, I'm going to kill you, or I'm going to shoot you," and then they could be charged with a felony, potentially?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
With this, the way that it's written.
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they don't have actual legislative language, but that's the way this is written, that they're encouraging.
Yeah, that could be potentially, uh.
Did.
I don't think that's the way to get at this problem.
It's a little different than calling it a bomb threat.
Right. And, you know.
I would agree. I keep believing with Susan's comments as well.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
I'm for the no.
Okay. Yeah, you, so it's a sense of the board that you want to cast a no vote for that. Any of the other ones of concern? I didn't see anything that particularly raised concern, and it's too bad Dean, Dean isn't here, because he always has details on.
Another.
On everything, yeah. Okay, then we can move on. Facilities referendum planning.
Not much has happened since our last board meeting. If you recall, we had our representatives, UA and Fendorf, at the last board meeting right before break, and so we haven't had any planning meetings, you know, since that time. You and I've had a couple phone conversations, and kind of planning for our next set of meetings, but so there are three things, I just wanted to kind of update the board on discussing, and that we will be working on in the upcoming weeks and months. Specifically, MG21 renovations, that's one of the things that we, one of the reasons I went to their governance board meeting tonight to talk a little bit about that. So Rebecca Fox-Glare has been working with Jared and myself, and architects to do some preliminary drawings, nothing's final yet, but in general, we're looking at doing, and we'll make sure that you get a full report on this as we get, you know, closer to a final plan. Number one, secure entrance, just like we have at all the other schools, and so there is a small room next to the front that we can make into a small office reception area. Again, we'll show this in a future meeting, those actual plans, so you can see what we're talking about, but secure entrance, some minor renovations to some classroom areas for their expansion, you know, to middle school, as well as, you know, some minor renovations to the office area. And then the biggest, the largest part is the food service kitchen area. So the pre, the existing kitchen that was used when it was Nichols Elementary has not been in use, is to renovate that and make that available, it would not be a preparation kitchen, that would still occur at the high school, but a place then to bring into the warming trays and so on, to bring the meals for the students, and then be able to serve out, you know, from there. On portable, on movable carts still serving in the classrooms, but those are the things that we've been working on, and again, we'll provide a more detailed report as that comes together, but Jared will be working really closely, there's really three sources of revenue to pay for those. The food service piece, some will come out of the food service fund, we certainly have some referendum dollars that would go towards that, and then we also have grant money from the MG21 expansion grant. And how that breakup hasn't been determined yet.
I thought the grant was paying for most of it.
Yeah, so, so it'd be really, probably a small amount of referendum dollars, but when we kind of put that together, like I said, that will come to this board, but just want to let you know, that's what we're working on right now, is kind of that proposal. And, yeah.
Could I just ask you, so as you work on that food service piece, one of the things you talked about in the bigger picture at the last meeting was using, making sure we use staff resource people. So in this particular case, we are talking to our food service people, right?
Sure, absolutely, yes.
Just double checking, okay?
Good.
Great, thanks.
Yep. So it'd be, yeah, definitely part of our food service program, or school nutrition program, yeah. So in fact, we do a little planning meeting coming up soon, where UA, of course, has a number of consultants for, you know, specialization, and believe it or not, there are food service consultants, you know, that specialize in school food service planning, basically to help us put together the beds, you know, for equipment, and so on. So, you know, Jared will be facility, you know, be a big part of that, as well as Dean Mathis, our food service coordinator. So I would expect possibly by the next meeting, if not for sure in February, that we'll have something, some details to report back to the board on that piece. Jared, did I miss anything on the MG21 that's?
Dennis.
It's coming up, Dennis, that happened.
Happens, needs to happen this summer, right?
Soon.
Yeah, yeah.
By the end of summer, yeah.
Okay, and then at the same time, as we know, one of the major issues at GDS is the serving lines, and so we're looking at tackling that as well this summer, and so that same food service consultant will be working with us on, again, the equipment type thing for the serving lines and on that piece. So those are the things that are kind of on the fast track right now, you know, moving forward. Okay, and then, as far as the new school, you heard the update at the last meeting, so there's nothing new there, just wanted to remind you that we have that visionary team that will be meeting, I think, again, in about two weeks, and then as they finish their work, as that kind of that, that initial, you know, plan, that would be the time that the board would get an opportunity to review their work. And I think the easiest way to look at what they're doing is, it's kind of like the idea with, you know, currently GDS, and had the pod concept. That's the type of thing that this visionary team is working through, is just kind of conceptually, how would the school, the, you know, instructional pieces be laid out? They're not getting into detail about how big this room is or that, or, you know, that all will come later, and that's where all the other staff would have the input, but it's really just kind of that conceptual piece is what they're, you know, working, you know, that's why it's called kind of the visionary team, and so, so we'll definitely meet. One of the things that I was trying to appear about in our planning for this is, you know, we talked about reserving that first Wednesday of each month for workshops, potentially, you know, this being one, and as we talked about, that may not, timing wise, coincide with the, we want, you know, make sure things get to you before they, you know, move on too far down the road. So I think that, Jared and I had a conversation today with Bob Weigert, a little bit about the timing, and we're looking at perhaps that first board meeting in February, the 13th, might be a good time for UA to come back to the board again, that'd be about the time these plans are being put together, instead of trying to wait for a workshop, yeah, at a later time. So I think at the next board meeting, I'll bring to the board some kind of proposed, more specific timelines about which things, you know, the board will review and when, and, you know, to make sure nothing gets away from us, because there are some things for this summer that planning needs to move along pretty quickly here, these, you know, next two months.
Susan?
Well, the visionary team had the opportunity to visit some of the newer schools that have been built here.
Oh, thank you. Actually, they did, right before break. So they visited two schools, one of the elementary's in Sun Prairie, with, no, Token.
Springs.
Token Springs, and then Waniki Intermediate School, so.
Who was on the visionary team? I was looking for that on the website, couldn't find it.
We have that list.
It is on the website.
It is.
So, if you can't find it, I'll find the link and send it.
Would you send it out to them?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Um, yes, Sue?
Um, one of the things, one of the discussions at the last meeting was specifically about a construction manager versus an owner's representative, and at least two board members have been contacted by previous board members who were involved in the retention of the owner representative, and have some concern about decisions coming to the board that are basically construction decisions, without input from somebody with expertise with no So one of the things we might do to better understand that position is invite a previous board member who was on the business services committee, who was involved in that process, that's fairly well respected, to discuss that position. So if the board chooses not to use that kind of person, they understand exactly what they're doing when they say no, because I don't think that position was delineated well at the last meeting. So, and I leave it up to the board president to do that. I have referred these individuals to the board president, because they do the agenda, and I think it's important for them to be making those decisions. But I think it's really important for this board, when you have a construction manager bring you a decision, that you know you're making a construction decision. So I think it's helpful to know kind of who uses those kinds of people, and why they use them, and how that's helpful or not helpful. And then the board, I think, can make it a more informed decision. But I just, I'm just bringing it up, and I would, if those individuals contact the board president, and they feel it's appropriate for us to get that information, I'm fine with that.
How do other board members feel about us continuing with discussions or consideration of a owner's representative, given the status and relationship? I just want to see how other people feel about it.
And I'm only talking about limiting that to defining what that person is and what they do for the board, so that we understand that, because it was not clear at the last meeting, at that last meeting, so, it's up to you.
Does anybody else have a, well, the board, I'd like to know what the board, how the board feels about that. Come on, you gotta help me out here. One way or the other.
I just want to see some action, that's not. If they got the bid, let's get going. I want to see some drafts, I want to see how the school is, I want to know a name, have a name for the school, if that's on the label.
What I'd be, whatever you choose.
I just want to see, I'm just, I'm here for the, I want to see this, this is new to me too, and I'm here to learn from, I'm just here from Fendorf as well, how they're going to handle, you know, futuristic school here.
I've had this discussion too, with members of the community. We have a little time for, if we wanted to proceed that way, we can have a little time, because really, we're a ways from spending the big money at this point, so we would have time to consider that, and I'll consider it, but one of the things that I see is we develop the relationship with Fendorf and UA over the next couple of months, that might also give us feeling, good, better feeling. So we have time to consider this, and I think as a relationship develops, I would like to see how it develops, you know, what, how good the communication is, and, because the owner's representative, I think it's, it has a lot of, it would make me very comfortable, but it comes with a bit of expense, a non-trivial amount of expense, that I'm also close to.
And I'm against.
And he's against any expenses, any additional expenses. However, we'll consider that and have additional discussions, but if you have a strong feeling about it, you submit it, putting that on the agenda, give me a note, but also, I think, one of the things, we can let this develop over time.
Again, I'm not looking at the higher, I want to make sure that this board knows the difference between that person and the construction manager, that they are entirely different positions, and they, just so, when we make that decision, yes or no, we do it in a board manner.
And if we had a, if we had a relationship with the builder, with the last one, which was a general contractor, the construction manager, then I would certainly support the construction manager. And I'm not sure where I stand on that, because we have different relationships. I would like to see the relationship evolve.
Well, so just to clarify, are you just asking for an agenda item that would explain the difference between the two? Because we did have some of that last time, we had some opinion from the administration, but if people feel it isn't clear, and they want that again, or it's not sensitive, or whether it's clearly.
No, we didn't have somebody specifically speak to what a owner's representative.
Right.
Right, well, Jared kind of addressed it, but yeah, if you want it. So I'm just clarifying what you're asking for, so. I feel kind of, if other people feel they need that, I'm not opposed to it, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion about it.
Fine, but if you don't support it, it's fine, but I want you to know what you're saying no to, rather than to have a construction manager try and define that for you, which is the conflict metrics.
Future meetings, there's a long list of them here, because it goes way out to May 1st. There's a couple committee meetings next week, and then our next board meeting is the 30th, I'm trying to think who's going to be back. What's not on here is that we will, is everybody attending the Wasby meeting at the end of the month? Not quite the end of the month, the 22nd through the 24th. Not quite the end of the month, it's 22nd, it's like four, three days. So the board will be in Milwaukee for the.
Everyone but Dean.
Everyone but Dean for the Wasby annual meeting of the State School Board Association. And, but we'll be, although that will, that will be noticed, but we aren't going to conduct any business. It's a great place to get ideas.
So I, we'll get this in, right, I just wanted to confirm, we just added this, the personnel committee meeting, okay, we had scheduled a meet and confer on January 17th, and then after that was scheduled, the next day Dean had emailed me and said he was mistaken, he's not available on that date, so I notified the MGA, they were canceled, and then since then, he indicated he might be back, or will be back, but I went back to them, well, they've already, they're no longer available.
Okay, so, I don't think people are in that committee, but might be nice if you let us know that. So are, are we having that meeting or not?
So.
Says here it's canceled.
So I just added that today, so I'll send the email reminder as well.
So the next.
You added that, it is canceled today.
Yeah.
Yes.
I did not send it to the entire committee. That was, it was confused, it was awesome confusion whether we're going to still try to meet or not.
So the next personnel committee is, what, 30th?
February 4th.
So, figure on the list, got it, four people.
Yeah.
All right. And as for motion, Andrew?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.